I'm sorry.
He wasn't right there. We need to have a short. I'll say.
It's just. It's. Yeah. All right. Grab will find. Yeah, right.
Put it up together.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
On the morning.
I sent him a call. I sent him a present.
There's a thing on the. I got it.
Like on the part mark. Jessica's. Jack this.
A presentation, I think. You got it?
Oh, thank you. Yes.
So.
People feel.
One. Anything else going on?
They didn't go up now.
I want to.
Kind of. What happened? She said he had a yellow trailer. Thursday. What I agree. They. They. My classes. You've been started off.
Yeah. I believe.
It is.
Twisted all up. I think. There'd be. You know. Some broken. I mean. Get that.
It's all. Always.
Yeah. That's. I don't know.
We're going to. Three more. Hot. Don't. But you know.
We are. So.
Read it.
I.
I. I'm. Still.
I'm.
That's. I'm. Picture. Really. She's saying. That is. Well. Yeah. Exactly. It's. More than ninety two. Like said.
Back.
He was eligible for that.
But my wife. Nobody. That side out.
Said on there.
And. I'll be.
I'll be too.
But yeah, that was. That's pretty.
The best.
Oh, yes. Or. But they had. You see. Of course. I mean, if it's. Should be. I did just. It was like. Going. Scrubs. He does. Oh, good. We're getting a yellow phone. Pick a car. My. Change. That's called. Your daughter. The precinct. Oh, there. I said. We.
All right. I'm good. Eight. Forty six. And I will call the public hearing. Commissioners Court. Item on the agenda is discuss and consider precinct number four. Vacating the last four hundred feet of Weaver Road according to the transportation code. And again, this is for the purpose of public here.
Judges, now. Got all. If I were here. Here in the. The names that were put on the list, everything's in order. I think. Kim, does that go with you to file in? I'll just give. I'll just give that to you right there. You have it. I don't need it back. Got copies. Paper in there shows where it's been. So. Six and two is no. Right after.
I'd rather listen to the. The scientist and the politician that's trying to.
All right. I've got nine AM in our. Public hearing will come to a close. I will call the regular meeting of the Commissioners Court. Session at nine AM. I've asked Commissioner Langford to lead us our invocation and please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for another beautiful day that you blessed with. Thank you, dear Lord, for all the blessings that you've given to each and every one of us. Pray that you'll just watch over us as we have our court meeting this morning and help us to make the best decisions possible for the benefit of you. Pray, dear Lord, you'll still be with us on this COVID and help us get past this. As do this lead, God, and direct us and forgive us for many sins. Pray this in Jesus, we might. Praise the nations to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag. Our place is to be Texas. One state under God, one and individual.
So that takes us to public comments. Do we have any? Public comments. We'll go to our consent agenda. The consent agenda includes non-controversial and routine items that the court may act on with one single vote. The judge or commissioners may pull any item from the consent agenda in order that the court discuss and act upon individually as part of their regular agenda. The items on our consent agenda are approval of the minutes. Examine all accounts and reports relating to finances of the county. Audit and settle all accounts against the county. And direct their payment. And approve. Excuse me, approve paper.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion to approve by Commissioner Murphy, a second by Commissioner Langford. Any discussion? All in favor? All voting. All right. Next item will be discuss and consider the authority of monthly payments to retirees. Highway patrol cell phone reimbursements, salary transfer, and sewer plant custodian monthly payments and take necessary action.
Judges, and I. I've visited with you over this. Now best with both the treasurer and the auditor. And this to me. And it's. It's a question been asked me a time or two, and I don't think there's any reason not doing it because. Just like our utility bills, we we just kind of automatically pay them so they're. We don't ever worry about a late charge on that. So. And to me, all these, the payments to the retirees and the cell phone bills, just to save having to worry about, you know, making sure they're approved on a monthly payment. I don't see why we can't do it the same way as the utilities are. And I've visited with, like I said, treasurer and auditor both some way to kind of make it a little bit more easier to handle. And they they don't have a problem with it. They'd like to do it that way. That way they know they can just go ahead and get the checks ready and get it done. And after visiting with you, I think it. I don't think it'd be a problem. That change anything, you know, this stuff like this, monthly retirees, highway, that stuff, it's going to be there regardless. And Bill Cameron takes care of the sewer plant all he is. He keeps T C Q in check, of course. And it's it's always going to be there unless unless it changes. And then if it is, it'd be brought before court anyway. So I'll put that in form of motion. I guess the authority, how does that? Then does. Y'all have the authority, I guess, to pay those utility bills, don't you, Jennifer?
Yes.
Give the authority to the auditor to. For the monthly payments on the retirees, highway patrol cell phone reimbursement, salary transfer, sewer plant custodian monthly payments.
What is that?
That is a juvenile probation salary transfer from their state grant to the general fund where their where their payroll comes out of.
Second. All right. So I've got a. Motion by Commissioner Langford, and a second by Commissioner Murphy. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor? All voting. All right. The next item is discuss and consider the sheriff's office racial profiling report and take necessary actions. Sure.
This is our yearly special profile tier two. We do the full recording. Just. A mandatory thing to bring for the customers. We had a thousand three hundred eighty two stops this past year. Four percent white. Point four percent Asian, Pacific Islander, ninety two percent white. Three percent Hispanic and zero Latin American. It's just a standard. Report is kind of the highlight. The first paragraph.
Most of the sheriff's racial profile on the board. Sorry.
All right. So I've got a motion by Commissioner Murphy. I think we had a second. Was it by Commissioner Mayfield? Yes. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? All voted for. All right. Item three. Discuss and consider approving the bonds for Stephanie Horton as just to the peace precinct one and Barbara Crouch as the clerk for just the peace precinct two.
I'm making most will you approve them bones?
Second.
All right. So I've got a motion. To approve the bonds by Commissioner Mayfield, second by Commissioner Murphy. Any discussion? All in favor? All voted for. Item four, discuss and consider the Texas Association of Counties' property renewal questionnaire and take necessary action. And I assume you have a copy of that. It's a it's this annual questionnaire. Ask if we have any major construction underway. Um, any buildings that are remaining vacant. Any losses property.
Might put that in form of motion to approve the Texas Association of Counties' property renewal questionnaire.
And and give me the authority to sign. Yes. All right. So I've got a motion by Commissioner Langford. And a second by Commissioner Murphy. Any discussion? All in favor? All loaded. For. Okay. Number five, discuss. And consider to rescind order number two zero dash two four four. Approving approved Monday, September twenty eight, twenty twenty. Precinct one entering rental agreement for an excavator with yellow house of Wichita Falls, Texas, for culvert replacement and bridge maintenance and take necessary action. And I think.
Yes. Good. My. But on here.
Well, I think what we got is is I think we went to court and asked for permission to enter this contract. And then what I'm being told is we. We didn't enter into it.
We hadn't.
Okay. Well, we got the outside auditors requesting a copy of it. So if it doesn't exist, we've got to rescind it.
Okay. When it. I don't have. There was.
I guess if you do it later on, we just come back. Go back with.
I really don't look to do that. I'm gonna try not to. The reason I didn't is. Because the man told me two different times he was going out there to take care of this. And he didn't. I don't know. And so. Whether it's stuff laying in there now, I can get a good break in the winter. I think I can get a back home loading up to get that break. And on the call would be on the other road. Where's some. They could redo all that. They got. Put another one top of. So. Yeah. So I'm like most of the rescind that.
All right. So we've got a motion by Commissioner Darden. To rescind that agreement.
So.
Got a second by Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion? All in favor? All voted for. All right. Item six, discuss and consider precinct number four vacating last four hundred feet of Weaver Road according to the transportation code and take necessary action.
Yes. It has to do with public hearing, and I think. Everything is done to to vacate the last four hundred feet. The people have bought it all besides on it right, right where the Weaver Road ends. They approached me here a month ago about the trying to get that done away. Keep people coming in and dumping trash or drinking beer on it. And I I'm tickled to death because I have had some controversy over it. You know, keep it open. So I'll put that in the form of a motion to vacate the last four hundred feet of Weaver Road according to the transportation code. But he has decided him has everything to put all the documentation to put minutes.
All right. So I've got a motion by Commissioner Langford, a second by Commissioner Darden. Any discussion? All in favor? All. All right. Item seven, discuss and consider unanticipated revenue from the sale of equipment in precinct four and take necessary action.
It's also man. Jennifer, I did not get the exact dollar amount from you this morning, like I told you I was going to. And so better dump maintainer back home. It's somewhere right at sixty seven thousand dollars. But I don't have it. If you do, I can put it in here, but. I'd like to put that in my machinery and equipment for unanticipated. But machinery sales.
Okay. I have the exact dollar.
And I know you.
But if we have, we do have a record of this. But if we have, we do have a record of the sale from the auctioneer.
Yes.
So we can just use that in the form of the motion.
Okay, you got, I know you had to check that, and it's right up, but maybe just between sixty-seven, sixty-eight thousand. So I'll put that in form of the motion to move that unanticipated revenue to my machinery and equipment.
Second. Alright, so motion by Commissioner Langford. I've got a second by Commissioner Mayfield. Any further discussion? All in favor? Alright, number eight, discuss and consider disbursement of Fund seventy-five evenly to precinct number three and precinct number four, and amend the budget for machinery and equipment and take necessary action.
Does I also ways to put this on there? And this has to do with, y'all probably remember back when we paid the right away fund or right away, our portion of it back about a year ago, matter of fact. And we've had this account, it's, it was a tax on just the people in precinct three and four to generate revenue by that right away. All the way from, I guess, from the Cook County land to the Clay County land. And that, that project, our expense has been taken care of on this. And one thing that I wanted to make sure with the state, when we were in here visiting with them, that Montec County would no longer be responsible for any, anything else on that. Ask them, and we ask them, would there ever be a reason to come back, more, more money for that right away? And they assured us that it wouldn't. So with that, in that, I'd like I'd like to do away with this Fund seventy-five and put that money, divested back. It goes, doesn't go to anywhere but precincts three and four, which I know that's certain, odd, but there's, I don't know exactly the dollar amount. There's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there. That, that, there's actually two accounts. One of them does draw a tax and it's for the whole county. But this one doesn't draw one anymore. Been sitting there for this right away fund. And it can only go back to three and four.
And it hasn't drawn a tax in a long time.
No, about since I've been in office.
And, and when you put that on the agenda, I, I tried to do a little research. It looks like our, the current balance left is four hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred forty-two dollars and twelve cents. It looks like we made our, I guess we'll say our final payment to Techstock in November of two thousand nineteen. And we checked for three hundred and ten thousand, four hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. I can't find when the tax actually started other than sometime in the early seventies.
Yes.
And then came to a halt sometime prior to two thousand and six. And so that money's been sitting in this escrow for a period of time.
Well, to me, if, if we can use it, you know, not going to use it for anything. Eighty-two's done. I mean, far as our portion of the right of way, I wish it was all, road was done. But if that, like I say, to me, if that belongs in precincts three and four, I'd like that.
Help me finish my thing and stuff out as far as, and that will get me some capital to work with.
I'll put that in form of motion to split that four hundred eighty, is that, I didn't catch that number completely.
The, the, the current balance in that account is four hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred forty-two dollars, twelve cents.
Split that evenly, and I'd like to put man in machinery and equipment.
What was that one more time?
Is four eighty-eight, eight forty-two, twelve. And so it's a tax that, that so a tax levying on the property owners of precinct three and four and, and split to go back to the use on roads of precinct three, four, news.
I'll put mine in.
So Commissioner Langford, was that, did you do that in form of a motion?
Yes.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Langford. I have a second by Commissioner Murphy. Do we have any discussion?
One thing I might say, there is another account there that is for the whole county, to my understanding. And it's hundred, a little over a hundred thousand, but it can be used. If this won't affect it a bit, it'll stay there. It'll keep a bill. And, but this, there's two separate ones, and this is the separate one.
The way I understood that tax, Judge, was I believe Judge Sappington told me that it was enacted in the early seventies, about seventy-one or so. And, but, but I do not know when it stopped.
So, Judge, there were two taxes formed in the early seventies. One was projected from three, four. The other was two A. Three, four was, as you said, provided the county's funding for the right of way on eight two. Two A was provided the right of way plus the county right of way for two eighty-seven. On four line. Once those projects were completed, the taxes were stopped. And you mentioned it, it wrecked two A. It's been gone a long time. But that's, specific taxes on specific parts of the county to pay for those right of ways.
Okay.
I can say, I feel like we can make the reclamation and clean up this account.
Yeah, and, and I'm also told that in that meeting in November of nine have, as guaranteed, there are no payments to come from Fund seventy-five, which is for precinct three and precinct four. Alright, so any further discussion?
Bob said something about waiting a year.
Talking about the other fund.
Well, no, this one we did.
No, this one that, that we're doing here, I want to wait a year after we made that three hundred thousand dollar payment. Just to make, give them, give us a year to make sure Techstock didn't come back for any sort of reason. But it's been well over a year since that. No, since we made that payment, it's been, well, that was in November of nineteen. It's been well over a year. I feel very comfortable that this, our, our obligation has been met right here, or I wouldn't, because something blew up. Precincts three and four left biggest money of.
Okay, thank you.
And further discussion? All in favor? The next item. Discuss and consider presentation from the Upper Trinity Groundwater Conservation District and take necessary action. I understand we have Mr. Doug Shaw, we have Mike Berkeley.
Judge, I'm, of course, I'm with you about this. It's been over years with the man, and this kind of update you probably order. And since we're transitioning all our permanent rules, I thought we'd just give you an update. But we're here to answer any questions you have, and then give you feedback for us.
Don't.
I just put together a couple of slides and stuff. Again, I'm Doug Shaw. I'm the general manager. I met all of you guys. Tracy's our fore president and Mike, another district representative from Monte County. I did want to mention that you guys, as y'all probably are, probably remember, appoint our board every other year, odd number of years. So four-year staggered term. Y'all reappointed Tracy in twenty nineteen, and this year Mike's term is up. And I haven't had a good chance to visit with him about but I leave that up to him. But I just want to let y'all know that, well, usually in May, where they usually, the court usually take action, takes action, the, the point.
Our, our pros begin it.
Yeah, so, so I just wanted to give y'all heads up. Judge, I'll send you a letter to remind you in the next month or so about that. Sit down, go to the next slide. Uh, just a few things, as Tracy said, since we were last here, we've been in the process of enacting our permit rules. Our permit rules, putting in place a permit process for we consider non-exempt wells. So these are large public water supply wells, large commercial wells, wells used for oil and gas industry, right? So domestic wells, household wells, livestock wells, ag wells exempt from this process. So the big thing is a, for the historic use permit, and these are, this is a permit that's issued to wells that were in place before two thousand, before the end of two thousand nineteen. So wells that were placed before we adopted these rules. And it's basically to, to back to, to ensure they have a right to produce water that they have in the past. And, and again, it's, it's based on their maximum historic use. They've been reporting to us for over a decade. We've got that data. We look at that. And that, and the permit's based on, you know, that for that past production. In Monte County, we identified ninety-five total water wells that were eligible for these, this permit. As of right now, we've received forty applications. Twelve of those were public water supply wells, twenty-six were for wells used in oil and gas, and two for commercial wells. But there's a big chunk that we hadn't heard back from. Largely, that is due to, these are all oil and gas wells, as you know, from early, mid-two thousands through middle of last decade. That was really hot, a lot of oil and gas activity up here. And most of those ninety-five wells, that's what they were used for. Those were drilled by oil and gas companies, EOG, for example. They'd come on somebody's property, you know, drill a water well, use it. And then when they were done, they would transfer the ownership of that water well back to the landowner. Most of those wells are sitting there without a pump in them with no power, just capped. A lot of them are being used to supply water for livestock or for ag purposes, which is exempt from this process anyway. But because there are so many, we sent out of those ninety-five, we sent out certified letters, I think on four occasions last year, and I've made numerous phone calls to those people. But the deadline to submit historic use application was the end of last year, but because there are still so many outstanding in that one. And last year was so strange, just COVID restrictions. Our board voted last month to extend that deadline through June of this year. So we're still working with them. I don't expect many of them to submit applications. Again, most of those wells, they're either not being used, the landowners have no intention to use them for commercial purposes, or they're being used for livestock, and that's all the useful. So just wanted to let y'all know where we are on that. A couple other issues, um, or updates. And this is something Tracy and I have talked about quite a bit. You know, we've had our two acre track size requirement for, you know, over a decade, that's two thousand nine. What we're seeing is not, not often, but every now and then we'll see one about, you know, every year or so across the district. Folks that are still subdividing pieces of property that are less than two acres. In most of, most, what I think is happening, what I see is happening, is it's generally, they'll hire a surveyor, and the surveyor may not be familiar with any of our four counties plating rules or with our rules. A lot of times the surveyors are out in the area, and they'll go survey off one acre. And the first people that become aware of it is us, because somebody files a new well application. And we're like, well, we have a two acre requirement, and, you know, in most of our district, that should have been platted with the county to begin with, even if you're subdividing something less than ten acres. It's just an issue that we're seeing. It's not happening all the time. It's just occasional. But I did want to bring that here, and Tracy wanted me to bring that to y'all's attention. That, that is still happening occasionally out there.
And the reason for the two acres is for much of our district, especially in the geology, we've got some, actually seven, some of the wells in our county, is it takes two acres, provide enough water for the best well without taking water from their neighbors. So if you cut it down to one acre, they're not only using the water under their land, which is their legal right, using the water under their neighbor's land, which is not their legal right. Fortunately for us, Monte County's septic ordinances require two acrement. So when these people are carving out a one acre tract, and a lot of times it's family, when leaving acre for kids to build a house or for my parents to move. But when they do that, they violate your septic rules and they violate our rules. And you continue to see in Monte County, I think I've seen one in each of the last three years, if I recall. One of them was up in, when you said Lake Nokona, and they actually had to get an easement in the neighborhood for the second system. This was a lot less than one acre. And they had to purchase water right so they had enough water for their well. It gets complicated, it gets hard for you to touch. There's been, eventually there's going to be a point where our force will say no, and you guys are going to hear pushback. But it's, these situations are breaking your rules and ours both. It's not because there's going to be rules, it's because you know, Roy doesn't want to use his neighbor's water, but nor does he want his neighbor to use his. The civics, the sanctuary, they help you.
So, yeah, and that, that's the big thing. We've, we've got some issues in, in Wise County. Some of it is supplied in, back in the seventies, and just abandoned. And it was supposed to have public water, and they come in and, it's quarter acre lots. Well, I mean, I'm in with the Wise County Commissioners Board, and they're like, well, we at least want you guys to, yeah, they were plotted decades ago, but we want y'all to make it, make sure they at least meet your setback, you know, fifty foot off the property line setback. So they've been putting together two, you know, two lots, but it's just a mess. I mean, you know, you've got, you can throw a rock any direction, you're going to hit a septic or a well. And it's just, I mean, that's just a nightmare waiting to happen, you know, folks not maintaining their septic. Most of those are aerobic systems. And if you're not treating them properly, they're popping, let's say they're popping out and spraying all sewage. And if those wells aren't completed correctly, you've got a big problem. So anyway, I just want to bring that to y'all's attention. Another thing that we've done, that we did last year, that, that was pretty exciting, pretty cool. Up there on the, the east side of Lake Nokona, the homeowner association gave us a piece of property to drill a test slash monitor well. There's a long backstory to it, but we drilled, there's some problems with their, with their water system up there, and we were wanting to see if there was water, good water deeper. And then as part of our process, we throw monitoring wells across our district, measure water level over time. We did that, drilled a well, we found some, almost, you see this picture right here. Those cuttings are actually from about five hundred and fifty foot below surface. And if you're not familiar with looking at cutting from a water well, when you see something like that coming up, it's going to make a lot of water. Water flows through that, that conglomerate really, really well. There was about a forty foot section that was making over a hundred, well over a hundred gallons a minute. Lot of water. What we found though, was it was extremely salty. Two, over two thousand TDS, I don't have the exact number, but I want to say it stayed around around point four. Really salty. When we were test pumping it, it was so salty, we had to actually bring in tankers and haul that water off. Total is all solids. Yes, sir. It, it's, one thousand is considered brackish. Yes. Like it's, I mean, you, we couldn't even let that hit the ground. That, that would violate so many laws.
I know, I used to check.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, like I said, one thousand is, is considered brackish.
But this part is for, for that subdivision.
There is science and engineering, but they can take the solids out.
To, to use that for a public water system, they'd have to put in an R O. You're right, there are, this is, there's a lot of salty water in this part of the world. Most people deal with it, but when you're looking at a public water supply, you gotta treat it.
They can, they can treat that water.
They can, they can. They have to put in a reverse osmosis, a reverse osmosis plant.
You know, about something you put on the ground and see a wide river.
But, um, but we, we've got that monitoring well up there. So we were pretty excited about that. And it was, it was a cool project. And it gives us a, it, it's interesting, you know, that, that's the same formation that just to the southeast Nokona Hills, their wells are producing out of. Their wells, I think their TDS was in the five hundred range. So much more better quality water, but it is what it is. That's really all I've got as far as updates. It's been, I've got a little presentation, I'll show you guys in a second. Last year, one thing that was interesting, when, this time last year, whenever, you know, the news hit and COVID and everything started shutting down, we thought it was going to be a really slow, um, year. What we found was last year, there were more water wells drilled in our district than any year in previous years. And I, I think what, what happened is with the restrictions, with everything that was going on last year, you're, you're seeing more and more and more people want to leave the metropolitan areas and move, move west. It's insane what's happening in Wise and Parker County, the number of houses that were built last year. It didn't slow down. It's already been, this grown up crazy, it didn't slow down, it actually sped up. And I, and I think that's going to continue. We're still not seeing And I, and I think that's going to continue. We're still not seeing. Nothing like the numbers we're seeing down there, but we did see for the first time since the oil and gas industry kind of fell off, we saw. You know, a hundred new wells drilled in Monte County. Um, so it was a big increase over the previous year. So what I want to show you guys is a series of maps we could. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to start with this map. These are all the wells that were registered that that existed before two thousand nine. Now, so if it's a home, household, a domestic well, a well used for for cattle or for ag. Uh, registration is voluntary, right? You have to register. So we know there's a lot more wells that were that existed before two thousand nine. But they're just not registered with us. Again, it's up to the landowner to register those. But this is what we know about. These are the registered wells that existed before two thousand nine. What I'm going to do, I'm going to flip through each year so you can, you guys can see. Um, the number of wells and where they were drilled, um, each year. Two thousand, two thousand nine, there were ninety-seven wells drilled. Eighty-nine and twenty-ten. One fifty in two thousand eleven. The next several years is the highest year for oil wells drilled. Most of these wells are being used for oil and gas activity. One oh seven, twenty twelve. One twenty-four and twenty thirteen, one thirty-three and twenty fourteen. Then back below twenty fifteen, eighty-five, sorry, seventy-four and twenty sixteen, seventy-one. One oh four and twenty eighteen, seventy-nine and one hundred last year. So you can see is a lot of wells have been drilled. Um, I just wanted to kind of give you all that visual so you can see it. If you are interested, I have the same map for the other four counties. If y'all want to look at them, y'all let me know. If you want me to split through those, y'all interested at all?
No, I had a question. What about you talking about the historic well a while ago, that's been reverted back to the landowners from the old companies? If the old companies come back in, do they have a, I guess it would be in a written somewhere. Do they have the authority to come back in and use those wells or will they have to drill new ones?
So they. So to actually get a permitted volume to use from that well. Need to to be able to produce, to guarantee they're going to produce as much as they have in the past from those wells, they have to get a historic use permit. The landowner can get that historic use permit and then transfer it over to the oil and gas company to use. If the landowner decides not to get a historic use permit, which is their decision not to. And oil and gas company purchases them in the future and wants to use that well, they can use it. But they have to come and get a separate kind of permit to to allocate for an allocation of water called operating permit. And that permit is based on the amount of acreage the landowner owns. Or if the oil and gas company has a larger lease, uh, you know, contiguous lease in the area, it would be based on the acreage of their lease. And and the thickness of the aquifer at that location.
So y'all, can y'all control how much water is pulled out?
We can, we can. Yeah, and then those are the ways we've we've done that and that's. Those are chapter thirty-six, the Texas Water Code, which goes, learn, uh, districts like ours, uh, you know, authority under the law. Lays out several ways we can control that. Um, and the two ways we've chosen. Is through historic use permits and that's protects somebody's investment, right? Somebody's made an investment in this well. We want to protect that investment you made. The other one is based because groundwater is tied to the. Property, you're right, you own the water beneath your property. So the the other way we've decided to allocate that for. Is based on the amount of acreage you actually know, right? So we look, we've got enough data to know the aquifer is is this thick in your, at this location. And you own this much land. So based on those two things, we can allocate a certain amount of water.
Well, I don't know, I I'm not, I don't know anything coming back in the distant future, near future, anything, but. I I don't like, I I am thwarted by, so I don't use a drinking water fracking wells.
I agree.
Now, the water just like come out of it, well, y'all talking about on the east side of the lake, fracking waters, uh. That they can clean that up and use it just like they can any other water they've got. It's just more cost effective drilling new well, but. I don't know what y'all got in mind, but there needs to be something in play where they can use that three hundred foot water. Out there to fracking wells with.
And so we've done what we can do under the law. I mean, obviously, you can't just tell folks no. But we've done what we can under the law to to keep that to a certain bounds, right? One thing that you may be interested in, a big push, um. In the legislature this year, it's been Bill, Bill filed and Senator Perry, who chairs the Senate Committee on Ag, Ag Water and Rural Affairs, he's out of love it. Um, it's it's kind of one of his, his little pet projects is they're really pushing, uh, the use of produced water. So for example, in the in the Permian. For every one barrel, like this is produced, this is water that comes up with the oil, right? Um, for every barrel of oil that's produced, ten barrels of water come up. And it, I mean, it's it's horrible waters. I mean, it's water from six, seven, eight thousand feet down. I mean, it's, it's just.
But there's no that you can clean it up to use it for their.
Big push. New Mexico's been doing some studies on it for a while. So Texas is looking at creating a consortium of us to look at, how can we use this? Within the industry, because right now what they're doing is they're just injecting it back in the in the subsurface, which, you know, that could cause some issues as well. Um, so I think, and like you said, I don't see anything coming back or the gas to this part of the world anytime soon. But I think if and when it does come back and we find out in the future, I think we're going to see a lot more of this produced water being used for 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 that purpose.
Well, I hope it is, because I I just know of some, some landowners that were having trouble getting that water. Out of those wells, their surrounding sheltered wells pulling them down.
It's it's crazy. We we've got, um, and I have the data here with me. So in our four counties, you know, we track water levels over time. Um, you know, places in Wise and Parker and Hood County, we're kind of seeing, you know, basically a slow downward trajectory. In Monte County, from the time the district started measuring water levels in four nine through about twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, water levels were falling pretty much around the county. In most of Monte County, they've kind of come back up since twenty fourteen, twenty fifty, because you don't have. You don't have all the public water systems. You don't have, you know, the, the subdivision going in with three, four, three and four hundred two acre lots everywhere. So there's not. The production that you're seeing in our counties to the south. And when that oil and gas activity went away, I mean, I mean, there were even like, I think. Four and five times the amount of groundwater was being produced, uh, during some of those years. Um, so in some of the counties, we've seen water levels come back up because it's just, they were pumping as well so much. Um, so, yeah, it did have a local impact in in a lot, many parts of Monte County. It really did.
Really did. When they frac, and I'm not an old guy, but when they frac. That water comes back out, right? But you can't use it. It's it's basically ruined. I mean, it's.
Yeah, it's.
Anything that comes back up has to be disposable.
Yeah, I mean, you you can treat it, but it's not cheap to treat.
But they could clean it up and use it again, but.
Exactly. It's not as tall, feasible, and even if they have to find loads like yours, it's not. But they can't clean it up. Like what you're saying, that field there at two thousand parts per million that he got over there, that's a, that's insignificant. Don't even, well, I mean, it's nothing for for them to frac with.
Yeah, they can use that.
That's pure water for them. The. What he's talking about, produce waters coming out of water wells. Most of them may work from hundred fifty thousand to five hundred fifty thousand chlorates, parts per million. You're like two thousand, which which sort of brackish for drink.
Yeah, for for actual water.
For use like oil field, I I pump it go.
Yeah.
They like put a four I tricked them anyway.
Yeah. But. But I think you're starting to see, especially from some of the bigger companies, you're starting to see some buy-in from. Uh, at least in the Permian, you're starting to see more, more and more reuse. Um, there's getting so much push. And so we'll see.
I was scary about the small net water up here. I've seen several of these, but the tubing was flowing back up. And that stuff is so hot. It's like we already spoke about, the truck trucks will be so hot and windy, you couldn't even touch. Then you got radioactivity in all this water. And then what was really neat though is the pipe. You take it two and seven inch pipe, then it will be have about three quarters of an inch travel space and the rest of it had collected in there. And it was just like crawling back out. It was, it's hard and I mean, you couldn't break it. And it would collect inside that, but it was just coated too, and then they're worried about metal and line about and all that. It's a big mess. We have this same kind of exposure right here.
So concerning to have it, it was legitimate. We saw Mike has Monica Rose, I don't get his farm, here's Rancho in there in that area. And during the heat of Barnett Show, when they're pouring water out of the south third, southeast third county. Our water levels were dropping. And we did have people who had issues, especially shallow wells, they'd drop them below their pumps or below the pipes. Uh. We've done everything we can to address that. So if and when this comes back. And only gas comes back and wants to start fracking up here again. We can control it with this, we can. The good part is, I just looked. In Monte County, there are ninety-five wells, large production wells. That would qualify for historic use permits, but we've not heard back from property owners. Most of those have been given back to the landowners. Most of them are not even entitled. That's, there was only a hundred and sixteen, what I call frac water wells in the county. Only twenty-one of them got permits and most of them are in private property units to be used for livestock. So we've already taken three fourths of of those frac wells off the market. If they don't apply by the end of June, correct?
I think they're completely off.
Because Roy, you own, if you own a thousand acres, you have to write some water under your.
I don't know, I thought about the commercial also. Don't let them have them back, make them drill new ones, but at this time.
That's what they're going to have to, they're going to have to drill new ones and they're going to have a per acre allotment that they're going to get. And I'll be honest with you, for some of these areas, it's going to be a lot less than what they came out of the brand store.
Well, the main thing is they need to. Well, they need, they need to, uh, find the cement from top to bottom.
And not, not grab, not pack them all the way to the surface and.
Yeah, because you're just tying everything in, that's dropping everybody.
And that that's, that's exactly how they're drilling. When I look at these oil and gas water wells, they'll drill them three, four, five, six hundred feet. And they're basically, you know, they've done gravel pack all the way to the surface. They're everything from, you know.
Still sleeping through gravel. And then, but if they'll make them get a bond, they'll see it up the top and bottom, then of course it's going possible.
And and so we we have them, um, as part of the rules, as one of the kind of minor details, we did put language in there to require that kind of stuff. So it's going to be interesting. It's going to be a lot different if it does come back. I don't think you'll see near the production of groundwater that you sold in the past. And it'll be done, I mean, there'll be a.
You know, that needs to be your one major priority right there, drinking water.
Yeah, exactly.
It's it's got to be, if not to be out of.
Exactly. Yeah, uh, the point was, I always got Monte up there. Pressure like this, almost every one of those docks was no home built the last eleven years.
Yeah, that's funny. And you know, you take a new home compared to what these oil companies were pulling twenty-four hour period. That's a lot of water compared to them being home spread out like you did on two acres. I think it's good, it's.
Yeah, yeah, it is. And and Commissioner, up here, I mean, you know. Going to talk about what I've seen. These new homes aren't using nearly as much water up here as they do the counties to the south, right? These subdivisions. You know, we see to the south, they're saying Augustine lawns and they're, and they've got their sprinklers going every single day in the heat of the day. What we're seeing up here, it's that that they're not using a fraction of as much water. So it's it's not nearly as much of an issue, it is. You're not kidding. Some of I've driven some divisions and their sprinklers will, will pour, it's pouring down the rain and like, you know.
Well, that, you know, that can be controlled, but if it, you know, if it needs to be the same way, you know, a lot more swimming pools being put in. These houses being built now are very cost effective for using water. You know, you don't use much water. Washing machine's supposed to be forty-five percent of your, what you use and they're more efficient anymore, but that's. Again, I'm not, if if the oil companies are held feet to the fire, I'm not really worried about the homeowners and stuff. But, you know, the water's there for them in our part. And, uh, you know, down Parker County and them other ones, that's a different story, but. You know, they got to take care of their business.
Do you, do you want to see one of the other counties to see what's happening?
Uh, I'm good with it, Tracy. I've, I've dealt with y'all's thoughts past and the deal with.
Well, wise, well, no, Parker County or eastern half would be almost solid dots.
Yeah.
It it's pretty crazy what's happening. In in Wise County, it's.
You know, when the thing matters, they cut their nose off, fight your face, they know they got the water under homes down there and they're still not spreading out the.
There there's there's something. Price of the raw to make her lots. It's insane. Man, there's so much money to be made.
I understand, part I understand, but part of Kenny is you move out of the metroplex. What are you gaining?
And I mean, it's happening in Wise County too, that, you know, coming up the north northwest side of Fort Worth, up in the, in the Wise County. It's crazy what's happening. Well, gentlemen, uh, if you don't need anything at all, I think I've got. Um, you don't know how to get ahold of me, Tracy, and I appreciate y'all some.
Appreciate you coming. And I know when I first came in here, we had a, a meeting with Mr. Metzler and Mr. Sean. It was, it was, uh. It was very eye opening.
I appreciate it, man. Y'all gave me a hard cover, man.
Thank you.
Judge, can I back up one thing on that, uh, sale equipment? Jennifer sent me the exact dollar amount. I can enter it in there if that's. It has worked sixty-seven thousand, three fifty, twenty-five.
Been that motion?
Yeah, it's been, that's exactly the.
That will take us to item ten, which is executive session in compliance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. Um. We'll go into executive session for personnel matters with the appointment of the unexpired term of constable for precinct one. Uh, as we know, that that constable has moved into the justice of the peace precinct. And so, uh, I've got. Nine, nine, we're going to executive session. All right, so we've returned from executive session, we will reconvene at ten fifty six AM, um. And take the actions as a result of our close.
All right, dudes, I'd like to make a motion that we, to fill the unexpired term that was vacated by Stephanie Horton. Take applications to close a business on March the ninth, that's a Friday week for Friday. The same for serve on the committee. To pick one, that's been Clay Riddles, Jennifer Esri, and Jennifer, no, we have.
All right, so I've got a motion by Commissioner Langford, I've got a second by Commissioner Murphy, any discussion? All in favor, all voted for, and that's the last item we had, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Langford, a second by Commissioner Darden, all in favor, all voted for, we are adjourned, thank you.